I heard something different just now. We all set? Thank you. We will now convene our Selma's, a special agenda Selma City Council regular meeting, actually a special meeting, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at nine AM in the Selma City Council Chambers, seventy ten Tucker Street in Selma, California, nine three six six two. The teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand. We will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Notice to meeting attendees, members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of threatening or abusive language or other acts which disturb, disrupt, or impede or otherwise render the orderly conduct of a city council meeting infeasible. Do you call the roll, please? Special meeting, we're not going to do the pledge.
Councilmember Avalos?
Here.
Councilmember Osagara?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted on in the order listed. Additions to agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five four dot two B. Next part is oral communications. And at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the regular meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Do we have any oral communications this time? Do we have anybody online or on the phone with a comment?
Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, sir. Well, that will move on to our one and only regular business item, which is a action item, authorizing the Public Works Director to sign and issue a written purchase order to Musco Sports Lighting LLC for sports lighting with related supplies and services to be installed at Schaefer Park for the total price of eight hundred and forty two thousand, six hundred and eighty three dollars and sixty four cents.
Mayor, members of council, the whole idea behind this is to get our lights in place at Schaefer Park by November. Takes eight to ten weeks to manufacture these things. And so by authorizing someone to execute the purchase order through Sourcewell to Musco, that should trigger the beginning of the manufacturing process. We still need to get in place some form of detailed contract. There may well be one there. I don't know. I'm not real certain how the Sourcewell works. I believe it's simply a clearinghouse. And I think because of the reference to two different project numbers on the, on the quote that you see there, there may well be a standard form contract that is already acceptable to Musco. Ultimately, we just have to see that so that we can see what the details are with respect to the payment arrangements, the, the terms of their warranty, those sorts of things, indemnification provisions, other things that the city requires in all of its contracts. But there's, there's one slight change to the proposal made by my staff report, and that is that we should, instead of the Public Works Director, authorize the Deputy City Manager, since your interim city manager is absent today and we want to get this done immediately, authorize the Deputy City Manager to execute the purchase order. That will hopefully get things rolling. He and I will work together to figure out whether there, whether or not there is an existing contract, and if not, we will, we will negotiate that contract with Musco and make sure that everything runs smoothly.
Thank you, City Attorney. We were given a proposal, pretty comprehensive proposal for the Musco. And I am going to just take it on faith that the terms of this purchase order will align with the terms of that proposal.
Yes.
With no changes?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, not that this is about the, the, anything other than the lights, but it's also, now that you brought up Sourcewell, my question is, I know the city has used them before for purchasing the office equipment, for one. Do they go back and charge the vendors a charge? How does Sourcewell make their money? Because I'm just wondering, does the city pay them in increment? Or do they charge the vendors kind of like an Amazon deal with a purchase group?
I, I believe that that is a fee paid by the contractors that are on their list or the vendors on their list. So when you go to Sourcewell's website, there's a search window that you can pull up contractors, equipment, whatever you're looking for. I believe that to be vetted and be on Sourcewell's list, that's a fee that's paid by the contractor. There's no contribution by the city. The benefit of Sourcewell is that the contractors are pre-vetted, all of their insurance, all the, everything that you would do for like a CIP project is vetted through Sourcewell to become a member and be on that list. The benefit for us using Sourcewell, they only deal with government entities and you get an automatic ten percent right off the top, whether it's equipment, material, whatever it is. So like Musco, we got that ten percent discount for using Sourcewell.
Okay, good to know. Any other questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question, just, just to get some clarification, because I know there's some questions out there. But just to confirm with this Director Han, give us the rundown. Musco is responsible for the installation. Public Works is not going to do any, any installation, anything. The only thing we're going to do outside of the installation will be electrical that will be installed by Alves Electric. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if you look at the very last page of that packet of four papers, there's two prices on there. The top one is what I originally did my takeoff to see what it would cost city staff to actually do the install. That's the one that's within five thousand dollars of their contractors' costs. And that's why I said it would be better to have them do it, full liability put on Musco.
Right.
The contractor works through Musco, so there's no separate payment to them, thus being able to use Sourcewell and not bid out that portion of the work. And that is per an email from Mr. Costanzo when we asked that question last week. The bottom portion is Mr. Alves actually installed a lot of that lighting system originally when it went in. He knows that the newest field, the wiring is only about twelve to fifteen years old. The, the life expectancy typically on that kind of infrastructure is thirty to fifty years. So what we have to do, the fifty five thousand, eighty dollars is our takeoff that I worked with Mr. Alves to understand what kind of wire, how do we buy it? They come in big rolls of like spools of like a thousand to fifteen hundred feet. We did that whole takeoff. My hope, and it's not a, my hope is that the infrastructure that is existing, the majority of it, will meet the specifications that Musco requires for the gauge of wire, the temperatures that it's rated for, and we have to do that in order to get the twenty five year warranty. So that number is for, if we have to go in with a couple of public work staff and an electrician and buy the material, that is what we're looking at paying. That is to rewire every single light on that complex. Again, my hope is that this money is not even close to what we actually spend. A quick update, I did talk to Bob Crookham yesterday from Musco. Because we're moving forward so fast, he wants to get his contractor out here. So that he's going to contact me next week and he is going to bring his laser setup, his contractor. They're going to actually start pre-construction stuff next week. When we do that, we will have Mr. Alves out so that when Bob's there, we can actually go open up the switchgear and the panel, show them what we have, and then we'll get a better idea of kind of what we're going to have to do. We're also having our public work staff start going around and at the locations where the poles are going to go by the previous late location. Those splice boxes are all full of dirt, gophers have dug up, and we're going to clean, get all those cleaned out in the next week or so. We're going to get concrete bags and we're going to pour concrete in the bottom to keep the dirt. We're going to get that whole system cleaned up. We're going to blow all the conduit out, even if it's good, and have that ready. So that's what that bottom portion. So I want to just remind council that this, this is the Musco cost. Their contractor will install. There's no liability on the city for any of that, thus the twenty five year warranty. We will only be working on the electrical infrastructure.
Okay. So any malfunction, let's just say something goes wrong. Musco will then be responsible for the repairs, anything that they need to come out and take care of. Is that correct?
That is correct. The material, labor, all of that. They also monitor the system and that is a twenty five year warranty. And that goes back to what I just said. In order for them to approve our distribution system to the poles, that's why we have to do this work, because if we don't do it and there's some problem down the road and they come out and start testing stuff and turns out that we have old faulty wires, that warranty's gone.
Okay.
So.
Let me just confirm that. Thank you.
I have a question real quick. It, it doesn't pertain to the actual, it just pertains to the fiscal impact. Where are we going to, where are we getting this money from? Is this going to be amended to the existing approved budget? Or is it going to be extended? Or is it coming out of general fund?
So during the budget process, I think it was discussed and it's identified in the staff report that the Schaefer Park lights would be coming out of the reserve. And so we would do that. Part of the recommendation today, when council takes their action, it, it should include that the funding for this item does come out of the reserves so that we can prepare a budget amendment at mid-year to show where that money was coming from.
One more question on that. When, when you said they're going to be monitoring it, how often are they going to be monitoring those lights there?
Those, those lights are monitored twenty four hours, three sixty five. I believe that Bob said that their hub, where they have their people that, that are their IT people is in Iowa. It's a big building full of monitor screens. They monitor every system that they own. And that is part of the warranty. So the way that it was explained to me, Councilman Avalos, is that if we even have a light on one of the light bars that goes out, it sends a signal automatically to Musco and Musco contacts their people and tells them, and if it's something critical where you lose an entire light pole for some reason, they will be out, I believe he said, within seventy two hours with their people to fix it. If it's something, just a light and it's not affecting the entire ball field, like play or anything, they can determine that from where they monitor and it could be up to thirty days for them to come out and replace it. But again, it's not, we don't pay for anything. We don't pay for new bulbs. We don't pay for the labor cost. That is all part of the Musco twenty five year warranty. And going back to why I originally said that this was, I thought, the best way for us to go, and that was my recommendation.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions?
Question. I know about a month ago when we were out there on the, at the park with Rob, and he said he can guarantee this project to be completed by November first. That wouldn't be an issue. However, that was a month ago. My concern now is we're in, you know, a month of lost time, I would say. Well, I wouldn't say lost time, but what my issue, my concerns are, I don't want to be rushed. I don't want to have to give somebody a deadline and then something could go wrong. You know, I mean, we want it done. We want it done right. And I get it because there's some softball, baseball team starting. If for some reason they need a little more time, then I think that they should be accommodated a little more time so that nothing goes wrong. And whoever, just like we've had to make adjustments with the Bandits Camp Play, Practice at Schaefer Park right now, they have to go to Brett Linger. You folks at, you know, Parks and Rec might have to do some other adjustments. And I think having that conversation now is going to prepare you in case that does happen. So, you know, we're just getting so much of this mixed signals and I just don't want that to come up a week before November first, hey, they're not in yet. And then guess what? You guys promised this league when you knew two months ahead of time that it could possibly be that they're not going to be able to get that done.
So again, I just spoke to Bob Crookham yesterday. And Bob knows that we were having this meeting today because what I spoke to him about is can I send you an LOI, a letter of intent to purchase, signed by either the mayor or the assistant city manager to get us in production? He goes, listen, you're having the meeting tomorrow. He goes, timeline is still perfectly fine with us for production and everything. He said, I'm going to call Tricia, who is his production gal, make sure, because they already had us on the list. It was just kind of an uncertainty. He was going to make sure with her that we were not going to lose that spot, that this would be executed. I told him I would have him some sign before two o'clock today. Bob guaranteed me, and again, that's why he's bringing his contractor out. They're starting the pre-construction. They're getting the laser, setting it up, making sure that if they have any issues on their end for what's going in production, it's caught immediately and they make that adjustment. Bob is still very confident that these lights will be done before November first and functioning. And I will continuously communicate with all of you and my staff as to any changes that come up. I will publish emails, but again, from what he's telling me, from yesterday's conversation, we're, we're good.
If, if I can add to that, too. As we've discussed, staff is always, has a plan B. We always have something in our back pocket because sometimes things don't go according to plan. We always plan for if there's weather. We're having a very cool summer this year that nobody prepared for. Me and my wife planned swim lessons over the last two weeks, warmest part of the summer, and our son gets out shivering because our pool's cold. Things don't always go according to plan. Our expectation is to try and meet the deadlines that are set. If construction wise, something occurs, there's a delay, what have you. As Michael said, we will communicate those delays, but we are already working with, you know, community services on contingencies in the event because safety is paramount. We don't want them to rush just to get it done, overlook something, and then it becomes a liability. We never do that with our construction projects. And in reality, we don't do that with any work that we do because we want to make sure it is done accordingly with expectations that we set with the council and the public.
I believe, looking at the schedule yesterday and talking with Bob, the way that it pans out, and I hope it does play out that way, for my own personal reasons. The first two weeks of October, these, this light system should be being installed. So be by the middle of October, if we stay on schedule with production and they come out and there's no issues next week when they're on the fields, I, I'm confident that this, this will be done at least a week or, or more before the November first deadline. And I'm saying that because I'll just let everybody know, they scheduled my surgery yesterday on the twenty ninth of August for my back. So the month of September, I will be working remote, working with my doctor, trying to get to a point where I can get back here and get in physical therapy. So I want to be here when these lights go in. And that's why I'm saying I'm really confident that the first couple of weeks of October, I can be back here personally and those lights should be going in. I will keep all of you posted with everything, any phone calls I get, any information, I will pass it along.
And with that being said, your assistant, Ulysses, has all the information, will be carrying on in your, in your, in your absence. Sounds like you won't be very far away. You'll be ready to plug in whenever you need to.
Absolutely. And I can, I can even jump on. So I've already, yesterday afternoon, talked with Ulysses. Ulysses and I, I share everything as far as our operation with him, so he is always in the loop with what's going on. He will be here, Councilmember Osagara, on the two meetings in September. I already got that scheduled with him yesterday, so he will be here in person, but I will be online. So if there's something that you need to talk to me about, and, and I'm reachable, you all have my number. I, I answer my phone. If I don't, I'll call you back. But yes, Ulysses will be taking that home when I'm gone.
Thank you.
In, in addition, we communicate on a regular basis, weekly staff meetings, whatever. And administration's aware of these, especially priority projects such as this. So we can, we, we communicate if some changes, you guys can, if you can't get ahold of Michael, you can get a, ahold of the interim city manager myself.
Everybody's plugged in on this, and really, that's why we're meeting today. You know, we're, we're publicizing it. There's been a lot of public comment on the cost of this project and on competitive bids. And we just want the public to know that, you know, we've all done our due diligence and, and we want staff and administration to know, we're all on the same team here and we're trying to help expedite this so that you do have that two-week breather in case something goes wrong there and you have a little, a little extra time there. That's important. And in terms of the financing for the project, yes, it'll do, it'll be from the reserve right now. However, the city has and is in the process of putting that land up for sale at McCollin Nelson, which the city bought, per the city council decision, for one point five million. We're going to be interviewing brokers at our next city council meeting. Is that correct? City attorney, real estate agent?
I understand, yeah.
To sell that piece of land, that money will go back in the general fund as soon as we get that sale. Now that we've kind of overcome the legal questions, whether it's surplus or not, it's not. We can just sell the land. And so we're looking to replace that money that we're putting back in and investing back into our park. Not spending, investing back into Schaefer Park for at least the next twenty five to, to thirty years so that our kids have a place and our adults have a place to recreate and stay healthy and, and do it day and night when it's, and it's a little cooler.
Good. Real quick, I want to remind the public when it comes to the financial burden of that system. The original quote, takeoff that the city engineer, David Horn, and myself did, his number was between one point three and one point six million. Mine was almost two million. With that being said, the main cost difference is the fact that Musco's pole system comes with prefabricated foundations. The foundation drilling and the rebar cages and the material, the bolt, everything to do that, that was almost two hundred thousand dollars of extra cost expense. So to make everybody feel a little more at ease about the cost, I, I believe truly in my heart that by doing our due diligence to go the route that we're going, we're saving the city probably close to a half a million dollars by going with Musco. And again, the twenty five year warranty, you can't even put a price on that for labor costs and materials. So I, I want everybody in the public and the council to know that we truly did do our due diligence on this and feel that Musco is the best, most cost-effective way to go.
Any comments from the public?
Teresa Salas. On the quote here, it says eight hundred forty two thousand. But it also says under it, sales tax and bonding are not included. Is that something else that's going to be added to this final cost?
It's showing the estimated sales tax at forty seven thousand, four hundred and twenty eight, so that's added into that cost.
So it says bonding, we don't pay their bonding, do we?
No.
Okay. And then the contract with Alves or the, the job with Alves Electric, is that, was that just given to him? Or is that, should that have gone out to bid to other electricians in the area?
There is no contract with Alves and Alves is on an hourly basis. And the reason why we've had him to come, asked him to come over and help us with that project is because Mr. Alves installed a lot of that equipment when it was originally installed. There's, if, depending on how much work we get into, we still have to abide by the purchasing policy. So if we're going to exceed the amount allowed for not soliciting three bids or going to public bid, we will absolutely, at that point, have to change direction and do that. But because my staff is going to be doing most of the work, Mr. Alves will be more for consulting and we're, actually, city will be purchasing the material. Mr. Alves will not be purchasing the material. So it will be an hourly, by the hour, on the hour basis for Mr. Alves.
More of a consultant, so he's not actually doing work then?
No, we're, my staff is, is figured into the, the, on this last page, the fifty five thousand, eighty is PW staff.
Wasn't part of the, the
I understand.
Packet, so.
So that, that is PW staff actually doing that work, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody online with a question?
Mayor, I see no hands raised at this time.
That will bring the matter back to council. Is there a motion to approve?
A comment before we vote?
Okay.
I just want to say that I spoke to, well, you guys probably know, I spoke to the city manager from Dinuba and they installed Musco lights in one of some of their fields. And he goes, you know what? If you, if Musco's available, you can afford it. He goes, go with them because they're the best out there. They do for a lot of the major cities and, and big, you know, complexes and stuff like that. And the twenty five year, you can't, can't go wrong, so I will support this.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, you, you'll notice there's no resolution before you. And so I need a rather detailed minute order. And so this is going to be a mouthful and you can make the motion simply after, by simply saying, so moved after I tell you what it should be.
Sounds good. Go for it.
So the, the minute order should be to authorize the deputy city manager to execute the purchase requisition, accepting the July sixteen, twenty twenty five quote from Musco Sports Lighting LLC and appropriating the amount of the quote from the reserves for payment of this purchase and directing your deputy city manager and city attorney to ensure that there is a detailed contract in place that governs everything that we need to be addressed by a purchase contract of this nature.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
In addition to the items identified by the city attorney, because I'm not going to repeat them, making sure that there's a determination that the funds for this item are being pulled from reserves for, just for the record.
He said that.
Okay.
It was in there. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Okay, item passes. Thank you, everyone, for all your work. Look forward to watching this job progress and Bob come out next week. Let's get going. Get that order in. And and with that, do we have any other oral communications? Anybody want to say anything before we go into closed session? Okay. Now we're going to adjourn out of open session. We're going to go into closed session where the following items have been set aside for city council to meet. In closed session, the city attorney will provide an oral report regarding the closed session in reportable action pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five seven, title, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five seven, all positions and departments. All right, let's take a quick five-minute break for everybody to all positions and departments. All right. Let's take a quick five-minute break for everybody to go, and then when we come back.